I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, August 8th, 2023 at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy and Alderman Joan Sullivan will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance.
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
You're muted, Ben.
Sorry, I am here. I am attending via Zoom because I had a business conflict and I can hear everybody in the room. And I'm by myself.
Thank you.
Alderman Kelly. Alderman Comer. Alderman Dowd.
President.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow. Alderman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Eleven present, four absent.
Thank you. Also with us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President. There were a couple of things I wanted to mention on the agenda. First, we have R-23140, which is the acceptance of a $3 million grant from the federal government to basically build a new park between the library and the Court Street building. The design is done. It is going to be a very exciting project that will add public space, green space, as well as some features for kids, and we hope to populate the park and use it a lot more than we do. I find this a very exciting project, something will be a very significant addition to our downtown neighborhood as well as the city as a whole. So I want to thank particularly Congresswoman Custer and Senator Shaheen for working to get this money for the city of Nashua through a congressional authorization. Also, Madam President, there's $150,000, which I thought I would mention, coming from the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. That will be used to help us pay for the upgrade or the rewriting of the zoning law, the sort of the land use code or the zoning law. That, we appreciate their support there, and you'll ultimately see the result of a new land use code. There is someone I wanted to mention who passed away very recently, Vivian Rowe, who was a longtime resident, involved in many boards, commissions, she was a, many boards. She was a healthcare worker. I want to send my condolences to Albie Budnitz and the family for this loss. Very sad, and we're really sorry to have lost her. Finally, I wanted to mention the Park Fest that is coming forward in, the Park Fest which is coming forward on Sunday. Thank you, Alderwoman Cle, for putting this together. This is going to be in Greeley Park, and it's a follow-on to the event which we held last year, which Alderwoman Cle held last year down at Renaissance Park. And it's Sunday, this should be a very good time, and we encourage everyone to go. It looks like the weather is going to be good. I did want to mention also that Nashua was one of eight cities municipalities across the country that were selected by the Nashua National League of Cities Advanced Economic Mobility Rapid Grant Program. So this is a $15,000 grant. We are working to bring support for young and other entrepreneurs, particularly women and minorities, as they start new businesses, new business ventures. So we will be spearheading a local business accelerator program with this $15,000 award. We will be partnering with an organization called Co-Starters, a proven small business training program, to help build a community of new entrepreneurs and new businesses to, these would be obviously small businesses. They will, the participants in this program will get training, tools, resources to help them move businesses from an idea to a place where they are advanced enough to receive funding. There will be two boot camp weekends for up to 20 people to vet their ideas, and an accelerator group of people, a cohort, we call that, for 10 weeks for up to 10 businesses to bring them from the idea stage to launch. The city, these businesses, any of these businesses can apply for the cities, for a loan, once they get to the right stage. The Nashua result, our city Nashua Revolving Loan Fund, and seek a loan there to help get them off the ground. So we're very appreciative to the National League of Cities for this grant, and we hope to start a whole group of new businesses as a result, and employ more people, help entrepreneurs in our community. And with that, Madam President, I'm concluded unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Responses to the remarks of Mayor. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving Park Fest a plug. I really appreciate that. We're looking forward to it. I also wanted to comment on the $150,000 for the New Hampshire Housing Authority for rewriting our land use codes. It's time, and I know sitting up on the planning board and so on, a lot of things come up, and I know I've questioned a few things, and I've worked with Director Sullivan and Mr. Durfee, so I think we, it's time for us to update them, and I'm looking forward to seeing what we do. Thank you.
Anyone else? For the record, Alderman Lopez joined us at 7:37. Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection. I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meetings of June 13th and June 27th, 2023, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and reports from liaison.
None.
Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. No one has signed up. Communications requiring final approval?
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award, Vision Government Solutions Professional Consulting Services for assessing.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I motion to approve a multi-year contract for professional consulting services with Vision Government Solutions in the amount of $444,900, approximately $95,000 annually. Funding will be through Department 132 Assessing Fund 53452 Staffing Services General Fund. By roll call, please.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Jettie.
Could we have an explanation as to what this is for?
The Vision contract is to provide the, to substitute for the chief assessor. They will, they, Vision, through this contract, will provide that service, supervising all of the work and assessments done by the assessors in the office. We don't think this will be a permanent situation because there is someone within the staff who is receiving the training necessary to move from an assessing supervisor to chief assessor, but in the interim, this, we believe, is the best approach. We have been in the market to hire a chief assessor, but no one has come forward to, no one qualified, has come forward to take the job, so we think this is the best way to provide the best service to the citizens of Nashua.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award, Vision Government Solutions Contract for Statistical Update Revaluation.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to approve a multi-year contract for statistical update reevaluation with Vision Government Solution in the amount of $430,000. Funding will be through Department 132 Assessing Fund 89726. Serve by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Jettie.
Again, I think it's probably self-explanatory, but if I could ask through you to the mayor, I know you've talked about trying to do revaluations on a yearly and annual basis to try to avoid the problems we ran into with the last reevaluation since it was such a long period of time, there was such a change that resulted. Is that your effort to try to avoid that? Is that what this is about?
Yes, yes, Alderman Jettie, you have summarized the situation correctly. The, what we saw in the last state ordered revaluation was that the housing prices had gone up an average of 40%, and since a number of years, four years, had gone by between assessments, the escalation in home prices caused a, an increase for home property taxes, property taxes paid by homeowners. So we believe that if we do the revaluations more frequently and adjust the values more frequently, we'll do two things. Number one, if there is any kind of change as a result of a revaluation, meaning the kind of thing we saw in last year, it would occur more gradually. And number two, if we do see a decline in home values vis a vis commercial property, in other words, if homes were to go down while commercial property did not for any reason, this would catch that downward motion, that downward trend, and would be able, we'd be able to reverse some of the effects of the last revaluation where homes went up a lot and commercial did not.
Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
I was just wondering if the mayor, to the president, to the mayor, why it looks like SURF, the Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, is one of the sources for funding this? Is that particularly was contemplated?
Well, we thought that that was the best place to get the money for the time being.
These things confused.
Although, Mr. Cummings has more detail, if you want to invite him to the podium.
Director Cummings.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and through you to the Board of Aldermen, Tim Cummings, Admin Services. So this is, this was a topic of discussion internally. We were advised by the Finance Department that this was the proper source to actually use. It is actually outlined as an eligible source when the fund was created, and as I understand it in the past, this is how we've actually paid for our revaluations back in 2018. This is what we did.
All set? All set, Alderman Lopez?
Yep.
Anyone, anything further? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Amy DeRoche, OED Project Manager, regarding amendment for professional engineering services for final design services of the Nashua Downtown Riverfront Implementation Project in the amount of $53,860 funded from 53107 Architect and Engineering Services/Riverfront TIF Fund.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve an amendment for professional engineering services for updates to the Cotton Mill ADA Ramp Project to meet federal funding regulations, as well as the Pine Street Pedestrian Crossing Final Design Services with Vanessa Hengen and Bernstein, VHB Incorporated, in the amount of $53,860. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund 53107 Architect and Engineering Services/Riverfront TIF Fund. By roll call.
Roll call has been requested. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Amy DeRoche, OED Project Manager, amendment for professional engineering services for environmental permitting of the Nashua Downtown Riverfront Implementation Project in the amount of $55,600 funded from 53107 Architect and Engineering Services/Riverfront TIF Fund.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I motion to approve and place on file an amendment for professional engineering services for environmental permitting of the Nashua Downtown Riverfront Implementation Project with Vanessa Hengen, Brussels, VHB Incorporated, in the amount of $55,600. Funding will be through Department 183 Economic Development Fund 53107 Architect and Engineering Services/Riverfront TIF Fund. By roll call, please.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award, Pitney Bowes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to approve a new lease agreement for central enterprise software to be used by the Tax Department for Property Taxing and Wastewatering Certified Letters with Pitney Bowes in the amount of $16,464.60, $274,041 per month. Funding will be through the Department 122 Information Technology Fund 54407 Software Maintenance General Fund. By roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award, sewer overflow and interceptor monitoring.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve amendment four to extend the contract for three years with flow assessment of Auburn, New Hampshire, for the combined sewer overflow and interceptor monitoring in the amount of $267,700. Funding will be through Department 169 Wastewater Fund 53107 Architect and Engineering Services/Riverfront Fund. By roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Sean Smith, Plan Operations Director, Nashua School District, regarding purchase of F-350 dump truck with plow in the amount of $76,797.95 funded from 81500 Vehicle/SURF.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I motion to approve the purchase of an F-350 dump truck with plow from Griponi Automotive Group in the amount of $76,797.95. Funding will be through Department 191 School Fund 81500 Vehicle/SURF. By roll call, please.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Celia K. Leonard Esquire regarding bylaw amendments to 201 Main Street Real Estate Corp. and 201 Main Street Financing Corp., together the bylaws.
Alderman O'Brien.
I would like to make a motion to accept and place on file the communication from Attorney Leonard regarding the amendments to the bylaws for the 201 Main Street Real Estate Corporation and 201 Main Street Financing Corp., and consent to the same by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I was, I have a question, but first I wanted to, I went through this a little bit once we got the memo, and I noticed that I did, I don't know, you can call it, I went down the rabbit hole a little bit on Board of Trustees versus Board of Directors, and I didn't realize that there were two separate bodies created by R-19136, well, they created the two Boards of Directors back in 2019. So I saw this memo as a good thing because it opens up a lot of, I guess, what previously was private nonprofit, thanks to Director Cummings for getting me on the straight and narrow on the differences between the Board of Trustees and the Board of Directors, so now I understand that even though a lot of the people are the same people, they serve on both the Board of Trustees and the Board of Directors. But my question around the memo is, why are we, why are we making this change now? Why, it wasn't subject to RSA Right to Know, it wasn't, we didn't have to post meetings or anything like that. Why do we have to do that now?
Attorney Bolton.
There is debate about whether these two entities, which are not the city, they are separate entities from the city, are subject to RSA 91A. In order to resolve that dispute, it's easy enough for these two entities to follow 91A. Now, the adopted bylaws of each of the entity have provisions in it that would purport to allow them to do meetings by telephone, to do meetings by consent and take actions by consent without having a meeting. That would not be permitted under RSA 91A. So they wish to change the bylaws in order to have the bylaws reflect what they are allowed to do, or not purport to allow them to do things that RSA 91A would not allow. Another interesting provision of their bylaws is that any of the, any amendment to the bylaws of each of these LLCs or each of these corporations have to be approved or consented to by the Board of Aldermen. So our office has no concern that the city has any interest that's going to be adversely affected if these changes to the bylaws are made and it resolves certain misunderstandings and perhaps problems that might otherwise occur. So it's our recommendation that consent be given and no harm will be done.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes, just a brief follow-up through you to Corporation Counsel. So now all the minutes have to be posted, I think financials as well. Is that retroactive or is that just on the go-forward?
Court hasn't weighed in on this yet, and this is not changing. They either are or are not subject to 91A, and they have been from their inception. That hasn't been ruled on yet. These changes to their bylaws do not provide any retroactive application.
Further discussion, further questions? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
Cultural Connections Committee, Lynn Boyer, new appointment, term to expire September 30th, 2024, 9 Northfield Road, Amherst, New Hampshire, 03031. Donna Marqu, reappointment, term to expire February 28th, 2026, 37 Pinewood Road, Hudson, New Hampshire, 03051. Samba Halcos, reappointment, term to expire July 30th, 2026, 58 Winter Street, Manchester, New Hampshire, 03102. Shanta Piss, reappointment, term to expire February 1st, 2026, 4 Cobble Hill Road, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03062. Zoning Board of Adjustment, A. John J. Minkera, reappointment, term to expire September 11th, 2026, 13 Mount Pleasant Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor's red and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the June 6th, June 8th, and June 26th, 2023 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the June 21st, 2023 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 5th, 2023 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 14th, 2023 Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of our Second reading of R dash twenty-three dash one thirty-two relative to the acceptance of one-hundred-and-fifty thousand from the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-three one thirty-two by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution Twenty-three one thirty-two is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R dash twenty-three dash one thirty-three relative to the transfer of one-hundred-and-ten thousand from Department One-Sixty-Two, Street Lighting Account Five-Four-One-Zero-Zero Electricity to Department One-Five-Nine Hydrants Fire Protection Account Five-Four-Eight-Three-Five Hydrant Fees.
Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, I move for final passage of R dash twenty-three dash one thirty-three by roll call, and I'd like to be heard on it.
Alderman Jettie.
So this came before the Budget Review Committee and was unanimously recommended for final passage. And if I recall correctly the discussion, this came about because the amount that we're, the amount that we're charged for hydrants, which is according to the tariff or the schedule of charges approved by the Public Utilities Commission that permit Penachuck for charging us for this hydrant service increased. And while the amount that we had budgeted for street lighting because of the LED bulbs that we have, the cost was less than what we budgeted for. So we are transferring the one-hundred-and-ten thousand from the lighting to the hydrants to pay the bill that is coming to us from Penachuck. If anyone recalls it differently, they're welcome to say so.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution Twenty-three one thirty-three is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R dash twenty-three dash one thirty-four, authorizing the mayor to enter into a federal aid program project agreement with the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation for the purpose of improvements to the Walnut Street Oval Intersection and to accept and appropriate two-million-sixty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents for the project.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R dash twenty-three one thirty-four by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution Twenty-three one thirty-four is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R dash twenty-three dash one thirty-five relative to amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2023 relative to the Community Development Block Grant CVVG.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a recommendation for final passage, or I'm sorry, a motion for final passage of R twenty-three one thirty-five by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Lopez.
Just to clarify, we discussed this at Human Affairs Committee. We do our annual CVVG funding plan and identify the different organizations that have plans for what we can help them do with that money. In this particular case, Opportunity Networks was getting some windows replaced and Plus Company was getting flooring replaced, and Opportunity Networks managed to do it for a little bit less than they thought they would need, and the Plus Company needs a little bit more, so we're transferring one from the other.
Sounds good. Further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Twelve yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution Twenty-three one thirty-five is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
None.
New business resolutions.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one thirty-six relative to the transfer of ninety-five thousand from Department One-Twenty-Two Information Technology to Department One-Twenty Technology Maintenance.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one thirty-seven relative to the transfer of six thousand from Department One-Seventeen-One Community Services to Department One-Seventeen-Three Environmental Health.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Moran, and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one thirty-eight relative to the transfer of two-hundred-and-twenty thousand from Department One-Nine-Four Continency Account Seven-Zero-One-Zero-Zero General Continency to Department One-Nine-Eight Interfund Transfers Account Eighty-Nine-Sixteen-Twenty-Five Transfer to City Retirement Trust Fund.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one thirty-nine relative to the acceptance of up to two-hundred thousand from the New Hampshire Department of Safety Homeland Security Grant Program.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one forty relative to the acceptance and appropriation of three million from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Planning Grant Program for the reconstruction of the Nashua Library Plaza area.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueye, Alderman Karen, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Clemmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee. Schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, August twenty-first, 2023 at seven PM.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one forty-one, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2024 relative to the Community Development Block Grant CVVG.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueye, Alderman Karen, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one forty-two, establishing a capital reserve fund for the purpose of funding major repairs, replacing furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and making capital improvements to the Nashua Center for the Arts Facility.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, August twenty-eighth at seven PM.
Madam President, could you add myself?
Thank you, Alderman Clemmons.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one forty-three, authorizing the sale of a tax-dated property located at fourteen Meadow Lane.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clea, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Gueye, Alderwoman Timmons. Did I get Alderman Dowd in there?
Yes.
Okay. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one forty-four, authorizing the sale of a tax-dated property located at Seventeen Jackson Street.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clea, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueye, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Lopez. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one forty-five, authorizing the sale of a tax-dated property located at Nineteen New Searls Road.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clea, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueye, Alderwoman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one forty-six, authorizing the sale of a tax-dated property located at One-Fifteen dash One-Seventeen West Hallows Street.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clea, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueye, Alderwoman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one forty-seven, authorizing the sale of a tax-dated property located at L. Bridge Street.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clea, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueye, Alderwoman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one forty-eight relative to the fiscal year 2023 transfer of one-hundred-and-fifty thousand from Department One-Twenty-Two assessing to Department One-Ninety-Eight Interfund Transfers.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one forty-nine, amending the scope of the Park Rehabilitation Expendable Trust Fund in transferring funds into the Park Rehabilitation Expendable Trust Fund from the East Side Recreational Facilities Expendable Trust Fund for the purpose of making infrastructure repairs to the Sergeant Avenue Park area.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Moran, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueye. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, August twenty-eighth, 2023 at seven PM.
First reading of R dash twenty-three dash one fifty, approving an amendment to the PCS site agreement with SBA Twenty-Twelve TC Assets LLC for the cell tower site located at Seventy Bridge Street.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Finance Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of O dash twenty-three dash zero-five-seven, updating the ordinance regarding the Performing Arts Center Board of Trustees.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Dowd, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of O dash twenty-three dash zero-five-eight, authorizing a stop sign on March Street at its intersection with Dudley Street.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Moran, Alderman Dowd. Given its first, and I'll co-sponsor that as well. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. Couple of committees, they're gonna be pretty busy, infrastructure and budget.
I think summer's over.
Yep, apparently. Okay, period for general public comment. We have no one signed up. Wow, with remarks. I'm gonna start over here today.
I have no comment.
No remarks. No remarks, no remarks. Over here, Alderman Lopez.
September twelfth, the Continuing Care is organizing Employment Connect. So any businesses within the sound of my voice that are interested in hiring or looking for people, definitely check that out. You can find information on the Greater National Continuing Care's website as well as Involved Impact. And then anybody who's looking for work, obviously, go to the library on September twelfth. We're gonna have a job fair.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of things I wanted to mention. This past week, one of my constituents had their water shut off because of the work that is being done on Berkeley Street. But this person happens to live on Concord Street. In that particular case, Penachuck knew that their water would be shut off, sent out the appropriate notifications, but there was a glitch in the system. And the glitch resulted in that not all the information that Penachuck had was updated and so on. So I'm just trying to send out like a PSA. More and more companies are using electronic notifications through texting, through calling and sending phone messages and so on. So I strongly suggest that everybody that has any kind of utility, that you make sure that your information is updated. Sometimes you can go online and do it. Penachuck, as they found out that their two systems weren't quite talking together, one system had the right information, the other one didn't. They're working on that. They're doing a forensic deep dive into it, but it's a lesson learned that I think it's something that we all need to do. We change our phone numbers, we change our email addresses, and the utility companies are a lot of people we think about. The other thing is that the city did put out an announcement that on August tenth, they're changing phone service provider so that inbound calls just to basically city offices from seven AM to eight-thirty PM won't be happening. But no emergency services like nine-one-one or fire or police will be affected by anything like that. And the third thing, which is near and dear to my heart, and the mayor brought up, is my little park fest. We're going to have like thirty-five different tables there. Many activities, a lot of children's activities. We'll have a children's activity tent there. Where we do rock painting, puppy faces, a lot of different types of things. Scare New Hampshire is going to be there, and they're gonna have a haunted walk-through. They're doing it for a two-dollar donation, and once you pay two-dollar donation, go through as many times as you want, you just have to get back into queue. But if you bring a gently-used wearable costume, new costume per person, it's a free walk-through because that's what they do, is they accept these kind of costumes and decorations and so on, but this is particularly so costumes and so on. We're going to have children's readings and they're going to talk about the Reading to Pets program that the Humane Society has and is going on, and we had some really generous donations that were given to this so that we could put this on. The majority of the people there will be nonprofits, so I really ask people to come out. Also pray for good weather on Sunday, please. There's a lot of people that will be there. Make It Labs will be there, the Rotary Club will be there, the Senior Center will be there. HOY and Involved Impact will be there. Wonderless will be there. National Habitat for Humanity, we're having a home built on Greeley Street with the National Habitat for Humanity, and they're going to be there, maybe looking for volunteers that could help with that particular build. She has to do three-hundred-and-fifty hours, so volunteers can help her get that three-hundred-and-fifty hours in for this. So it's really going to be an exciting thing. It's bigger than I ever thought. Soul Sisters will be there, Hazy Ice Cream will be there, so come, and for Alderman, I do have little brochures if you want one, so.
Alderman Clea, you might wanna announce the date, time, and place.
Oh, that would be nice, huh? It's going to be this Sunday, thank you so much. This Sunday, Greeley Park. This Sunday is August thirteenth, ten-thirty AM to two-thirty PM. And I will be there at like six-thirty in the morning, but, and I have an incredible team that I would not be able to do this, and if you'll just indulge me a few minutes, I'd really like to say their name. Mary Doherty, who is the president of TAP. All the funds will be benefiting TAP, which is Teachers and Paws Project. Linda Rue is also, she is the one who's been coordinating the volunteers, also, every one of them is helping put this together. Allison Galoppo is our Facebook person, and she's gonna be emceeing, and she's very dynamite. She did a little stint with the Nashua Theater Guild, and she was really good. And last but not least is Sandy Silva, and she does our graphic design, so all the designs that you see here, the T-shirts that you can purchase and so on, banners, all are from Sandy Silva, so they've done an incredible job. And I said the other day to one of them, I couldn't do this without them, and I swear in unison, they went. in unison, they went, that's right, I could not have done it without them, so thank you.
Alderman O'Brien. Well, said Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman O'Brien?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I would just like to say as the chairman of infrastructure, we have five authorizing the sale of tax-dated properties at various locations. Before somebody thinks that the infrastructure committee is hosted by the wicked witch of the West, that is not the case. Many of these properties have been in arrears for quite some time. Some are fire-damaged derelict buildings within the neighborhood and it basically needs to be looked at. It has been past history by state law, there is a minimum amount of time. Some of these properties have gone well beyond that. So the city has done diligence, tried to work with many of the property owners, but still at the last minute with the reprieve, if they should come up and make themselves whole with the assessors office, that can be done. So at any time, it could be yanked from the process. So if any, I don't think particularly some of the new members and even some of the old members, it's not something that has been done a heck of a lot, you know, by this board, but it is timely. If we're all gonna pay our fair share, then we gotta do diligence to the matter. So therefore Alderman Sullivan can agree, we got two in the Ward 9 neighborhood that need strict attention to, and maybe in your neighborhood as well, too. So there is some work and looking forward to try to solve this problem. But I just want to relay to the public, we're not into try to take anything away from anybody unnecessarily. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I thought that Alderman Cleese was gonna throw this football, but on the 14th of this month, they'll start paving Winter Street, Locust Street, around Franklin Street School. Also, in relation to that, that school will not start until September 5th, which is a couple days late for the alternative school. The preschool is always gonna be the 5th, but the whole school won't start till the 5th to give extra time for the paving and the marking of the streets and all that. Also, while in that same vein, on the 17th of August, we'll be paving the intersection of Medallion and Buck Meadow where the new traffic circle is, and the traffic circle at that point will be finished, it's about half-done right now. And so there have been signs posted there by BPW telling people that they'll have to find alternate routes, they will definitely be able to get to their homes, so that's not a problem for the other people to avoid that intersection on the 17th.
Committee announcements. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, on the 14th, there's gonna be a budget meeting here and it's gonna be a discussion with BAE Systems relative to the grant that they're going in for with Nashua Community College. And it should be a very interesting evening. Somebody from BAE will be here to explain it and Director Cummings, I hope, will be here as well. And we are also probably going to have to schedule another budget meeting because of the number of things we have to concern ourselves with, on the 28th, we'll be at quite a slate, so some of the items might be moved off to the first part of September.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. On our website, we have a health committee meeting for tomorrow. There's no health committee meeting tomorrow since it's been postponed until September.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Lopez.
As was mentioned earlier, the Human Affairs Committee has a public hearing, it's 21st, August 21st meeting, and then we have a couple of interesting agenda items, including the library renovations. But as a follow-up to our last meeting where we spoke to New Hampshire Legal Assistance and had a presentation on tenant rights and services that residents can access to support those rights, some of the city departments will also be coming in to talk about things like code enforcement and environmental health, just to kind of give people an idea of what, you know, they can do, what they can't do, what kind of resources are available, and that kind of thing.
Okay, we are now gonna go into a non-public session. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to motion that the Board of Alderman go into a non-public session by roll call pursuant to RSA 91-A73, numeral 2, paragraph L, consideration of legal advice provided by legal counsel either in writing or orderly to one or more members of the public body, even where legal counsel is not present, and I would like this by roll call.
Do you have a second? Alderman Cleese. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Gueye.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Eleven yays, zero nays.
And that motion carries.